The November 16th, planning commission meetings have gone back to these. Old Saver, Connecticut. As I call your name, please signify that you are here. Douglas McCracken.
Here.
Paul McKay.
Here.
And I know Kathleen is not going to be here. Jonathan Miles.
Here.
Megan Jutless.
She on there?
No.
Okay. Dennis Tulamary Jr.
Here.
And Michael K. Bender.
Here.
I will seat Michael K. Bender for Kathleen Suggler.
Do you want to see Dennis? I got to see him last meeting.
It was, okay, yes. See Dennis Tulamary for Kathleen Suggler, please. Thank you.
Keep it there.
Thank you. I couldn't remember.
I just read through the minutes, that's why, yeah.
Been a chaotic two weeks. All right. Approval of the minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 2nd meeting. Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Any comments, clarifications? Questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains?
Because I wasn't here.
One abstain, yes. Thank you. Any correspondence?
No.
No? And we'll move right on to the application for coastal site plan review. To construct a 1741 square foot house with depth. A couple of X and a 54 square foot shed at 190 Plumbank Road. That's correct. Yes.
Clarify, good evening. Good morning. I am Andy Kalanco. I am the engineer and designer for the proposed project. This is familiar for cameras as well.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the subject. Uh, property is a single-family residence at 190 Plumbank Road. Sometime in early January. It suffered a catastrophic loss where a pipe burst. And ran for about three weeks because the homeowners were away. And effectively rendered the house unoccupiable. And in the middle photo here, and it passes a running fractal as the icicles that came up out of the second floor, we go sill and over the top. So. Uh, the house as it sits now.
Before you start, I went looking for the property and I couldn't see numbers that directed me to 190. So could you just be, are you the White House?
No, the house next to it. You know the house with the big dolphin in front of it?
Yeah.
It's that house.
It's that one, okay.
Easy as way to right.
If you want to run it over.
It's about one. Nine, the mailbox. Well, okay, thank you very much.
Problem is if you slow down below seven miles an hour, you're gonna go right by the property.
Two houses, I think. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, certainly. So, anyway. Yeah, in fact, the building, we actually happened to come by and look at it. And then he did issue a letter to the owner saying that the house is damaged beyond occupancy as it sits. And in order to raise it, you would have to trigger, or you would trigger the FEMA requirements to elevate the house above the flood elevation. So, hearing all that, the Johnson family hired me to design a new home. What we've done. And in that design of the new home, we have worked to avoid any increase in non-conformity of the lot. And in fact, as part of this proposal, we're gonna decrease the overall lot coverage by a sizable 54 square feet by proposing to eliminate this shed right here. So, just to show you, the home's a very modest home, it's about 650 square feet per floor for two floors. They're not looking to increase in size. They're not looking to add anything on. They just want to be able to live in their home again. Uh, so this would be basically one of the elevations you would see as you face the street. You can see it's fairly typical of what is in the neighborhood for homes that are being elevated. Uh, side elevation here. That would effectively be the rear elevation here and the other side elevation. So it's basically a fairly simple project. We're looking to tear down what is left. Uh, raise the proposed home above flood elevation and let it be on our way.
Questions?
Your name?
Andy Kalanco.
Pull that to the first page for a second.
Above.
Yeah, please, thank you. So, the proposed exterior skin is going to be what?
He's looking for the certainty, the shape, the vinyl shape.
Okay.
Would you see a lot of down there?
Of course.
Then it's gonna be more of a square shape as opposed to getting words based on.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, Chris, thanks.
I was just asking, is it covered everywhere? But I like the shade.
Yeah. This is actually vinyl, what are you doing?
Yeah.
And interestingly enough, if you put the vinyl off, there's, there's steamer checks behind it. Why somebody would do that?
It's the mains.
Nobody.
I know, feels mean too.
Yeah.
I think there was a deal around a certain time in that area that everything was covered in vinyl.
Everybody did.
Yes. I knew this about.
Yeah. You don't pay by.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Exactly.
But go back to.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's vinyl?
It's a, it's a vinyl shake. It comes from like four-foot panels.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that.
Yeah, the theory is we're gonna put, we're gonna put sleepers in the found, in the concrete, the foundation wall. And that way we can apply the shakes right to the concrete so you don't have to do anything special.
So it's shakes all the way to the ground?
It shakes all the way to the ground.
Then upper she'll have the packs through so the water can.
Right, right. What can you tell me?
Okay, so I'm gonna give you a little re correction.
Sorry, we don't get these at all.
Um, I'd say probably six months ago, Marcy Belink from the Connecticut B E came to talk to you about coastal site plan reviews. And the planning commission, the zoning commission, she really was a educational. This, the planning commission, the zoning commission. And the zoning board of appeals can review coastal site plan reviews. So what you're doing tonight is reviewing this application for consistency with coastal management policies. That we review sometime. So this project is being applied for under casualty laws. They're not proposing to increase any of the pre-existing non-conformities. It's definitely a uniquely shaped lot. The proposal is to elevate it for flood compliance to construct a more resilient home. And if you refer to your coastal management appropriations, this is one of the charges of this commission is that you can review and approve them. So what you're looking at tonight is potential adverse impacts. And any type of mitigation that you can, the applicant has made to avoid adverse impact from the rebuilding process. Are you proposing silk fence and soil and erosion control? And you'll have that on a separate plan.
I do. Yeah, let's see that. You can have it, you know, as a condition.
Are you proposing to, I mean, you can go through and read it, but are you proposing to negatively impact any of the?
There is, there is no negative impact.
Coastal resources.
Yeah. There is no negative impact.
Okay, that's my question. How is that determined that there's no negative impact?
Well, the only, the only potential negative impact I could see would be is if you're increasing footage which could potentially increase runoff or increase.
You're not raising the property of the
No.
the top surface at all. You're just leaving it as is and doesn't help.
Exactly. I guess to, to be technically accurate, what I would say is there's no more negative impact now. Or we're not proposing anything that would increase.
Increase the negative impact.
Whether or not a home in itself inherently is a negative impact is the subject of the main question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, is the existing house sitting on the existing foundation? Were you ripping the foundation?
Foundation's coming out. It's a cinder block foundation of unknown quality and condition. So we're proposing to get that out.
And is it gonna, it's gonna be built on a slab?
Well, we're gonna, what we'll do is we'll do a cross wall. We'll go down 42 inches. Put a cross wall and then there'll be a slab under the, the house itself.
Yeah. And then the garage would be under the house.
So yeah, we try under.
Any other questions? I know we're raising it. It's like how, it's compared to the houses nearby, sort of how much higher like a relation to them is gonna be when it's done?
So the bottom, the bottom floor elevation will be by code the same as all the other homes. The uh, the highest elevation is, is 33.3. We're limited to 35 feet, right, that town? And so we're about to put an app under the requirements. I can't say I've measured all the other houses in the area, but they're.
Yeah, I just know when you get there, it's been not allowed to be raised. Like looking a lot bigger than the other one. Not much you can do about that.
We're under the wire considerably and certainly at least one half there is pushing it.
There's some elevation changes.
Yeah. But they're all of them. They're all gonna be about the same height as this, except for the house to the north.
It'll be lower because it's.
That would be, yes, right. It will be lower, which is restricted, right.
Really don't think that, I don't think it'll affect anybody's view. I mean, no, no.
There's abuse of the back anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not like you're blocking anyone from seeing that road right behind your house. Yeah, we'll see in the road.
Yeah.
Every time I make that corner.
Don't hit the dolphin.
No.
Existing house has a basement or no?
No. Crossface, crossface.
No crossface on the new one?
No, it'd be a walk under type of thing because it's for flooding.
Right. Um, I'm not sure who this might be a question for. That, that corner is flood prone across all the hull, that, that low line area, particularly near that, that white house. So expecting continued sea level rise. I'm kind of wondering, what is the, and maybe this is the town's responsibility. If that road at some future time is, say flooded every high tide. You know, a couple of times a day. How does that impact kind of everything around it? Not only the homes, but?
As far as, as I can answer it from the property standpoint, not the town standpoint. As far as that property goes, it's in a little bit of a, of a swale there.
Yeah.
And there's a drainage ditch on the, I guess that must be the east side.
Yeah.
Um, which right now can certainly accept whatever sent to it.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that's sort of helpful is that by elevating these homes. Um, you could, you could have a pot of water in your front yard and you're still not gonna, you're not gonna affect the house. If that became a nuisance, you could bring some filling or some crushed stone or something.
Right, I understand, like for an individual property, it looks like a, a great solution.
Yeah.
But if the road itself is under a pot of water every high tide.
So the road is a state road and there have been complaints made to the state.
Okay.
So that's up for the DOT to.
To figure out.
Figure out the contrast as they go forward with planning.
Okay.
In the future with their roads.
You're not proposing to like raise the level of the slab?
I am not, no.
Drive where anything is.
No, in that way, we're actually doing that purposely because we want to give him as much clearance underneath. So he's not kind of bent over when he goes in there.
Yeah, right.
You're a much bigger project, you're trying. Yeah.
And what is the height that you're raising it to?
Uh, 16.
16.
We have to raise it to 50.
So you're gonna go up more? Can I get a motion? There's no other questions?
Make a motion that we find the, um, application acceptable in that there are no adverse impacts.
So you would approve the application because it's consistent with all applicable coastal policies and makes all reasonable measures to avoid adverse impacts. And probably the condition, soil and erosion control plan.
Yeah, she took the words.
I gave everybody cheat sheets at one time.
Right.
I mean, it's too long. It's second.
Question?
Really quickly, same footprint of the existing?
Same footprint.
I'm good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you like his first?
No, I mean, I just, I went after it.
I'm more of my not.
Andy, you also do me a favor and send me a digital. Thank you.
I like the builders, gonna do them anyway.
Now, there's another question. I love it too.
We did that.
Love it.
Sorry, the house benders this, but you're gonna have a nice.
Put it in a box. You wanna wear a hundred? What the brass is made of today? Rocking paper. That's strange. Yeah, John. That was my favorite thing when I was little.
All right.
Hi, John.
Hi, John.
Number.
Oh.
Really well.
Okay.
I heard that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the workshop, the plan of conservation development.
There he is. There's John.
Where this is gonna. Discuss the framework.
That energy tonight.
Of plan and work on transportation and infrastructure update.
I've been on site since five, so I'm a little punchy.
Okay. Good evening, John. How are we doing?
Evening, Chairman. I'm good, thank you.
All right.
So, um, I'm sorry, did you want to do, was there an additional introduction or groundwork? Okay. Um, so I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen. Um, cause that's the way we do it. Um, okay, so this is, can that be seen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and is it relatively legible?
Yeah.
There is. Okay, so, um.
Can you make it full screen?
Let's see in the work.
There you go. Yep.
Okay.
Go back to the.
All right, so this is, um, where we're at right now is the, the beginning stages of talking about the transportation and infrastructure chapter. Um, and as per, uh, recent tradition, I've sent out sort of a worksheet um, to get some feedback from you all and some other, um, stakeholders about, you know, current goals, current threats, uh, wish lists, concerns. Um, and we're covering, just to again, sort of set the stage later, groundwork, um, transportation and infrastructure. We're covering actually quite a bit of ground, so not just your traditional transportation, roads, highways, rails, sidewalks, bike paths, multi-use trails, but also, um, other infrastructure elements, um, such as community wastewater, uh, public water, data, uh, broadband. And other elements of, of transportation such as transit, uh, micro mobility. Um, and things like that. So, um, kind of a catchall. And so I have compiled the, and I don't know, Chris, is this the one that you, you distributed out? Sort of the concatenated list?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So everyone should have this. Um, and you know, so a number of you probably contributed to this. Um, and hopefully people have gotten the chance to, um, take a look. I would start basically with concerns over the next decade. And I, I won't read through because hopefully you have it in front of you and you've already read through. But would ask if there's anything that you think should be, is particularly on point or should be sort of highlighted as a, as a top issue, um, or if there's something that we're missing in here, in, in, under a concern. We'll start there.
Um, I do have a question in the red. It says SLR. Super storm rise of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, the thought there is like if, if we have like a superstorm sandy in the government off all of a sudden says, all right, there's a billion dollars for anybody who needs to take on a project, you gotta be ready to go. Here it is. Here's our project.
Right.
Basically on the shelf, ready to go.
You're a permanent plan.
You can't wait till the storm hits and I know what we want.
Right, cause then it takes three to five years before you start anything.
Right.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Well, I, I guess, um, number one. Uh, it, it probably doesn't get stated here, but I'm always concerned about what would happen in a, a real emergency protectively in terms of infrastructure and, and what kind of an emergency system. We, I say system. Plans we had somewhere in the background or running a lot of this stuff or even communicating about it. But again, we can revisit that. My, my personal number one issue in terms of talking about infrastructure is the broadband in this town is, I mean, we have pretenses about being a I mean, just getting here from my home there, I went through at least three dead spots where there's no internet service. And of course, the service of houses is variously bad. So I would really like to highlight improving, taking steps to work to improve um, support for broadband in the town.
Well, that's.
That's just my last, uh, personal preferences and that's, and, and I think that's a huge issue.
Yeah, broadband or 5G wireless.
Yeah.
Look at it.
I mean.
And no wires.
Some connect.
Chris, has the town, has the town had any conversations about the implications of 5G? Or maybe there's a question for Megan. I know you tied into this. Uh, you know, what that means in terms of, you know, um, micro towers and things like that and the, and the, the you know, small cell tower network that might be necessary for 5G. I don't want to scare anybody, but.
Been met with, um, several years ago with a company that was gonna go through and put those very tall, ugly looking light folds throughout town to um, improve service, but I haven't heard anything since. And they were in very prominent visual areas. Um, and, and that was really the last I've heard. I don't know, Megan, if you have any insight?
We keep putting it in our plans to expand broadband and 5G access. Um, what we've found is that data that we can get is fairly patchy and people willing to work in the region is also fairly patchy. So um, not, not great information I can contribute.
It seems that we're the last on the list because we don't have the population. So focus is on.
Exactly.
It, it has improved. And there are actually parts of Old Saver where you can get ultra wide by way. I have Verizon, so it's.
Eighteen.
Yeah. So yeah, if you have a 5G phone, you can get 5G in town.
I'll just follow, I'll just follow you around.
Not every phone. Not every phone is fine. I know, but not every phone is fine, you know?
And maybe since this is a, a 10-year plan, 5G, 3G, but whatever the new technology is on. We should just, whatever that technology is overall.
Yeah.
Fast and reliable.
Sounds like a television commercial now.
It's important for schools and the local workers and they better break the track businesses to town. I think one thing that I would like to add to the, uh, concerns for the next decade is the lack of safe crosswalks and bike paths in town. I mean, we have what, three on Main Street? Unfortunately, that probably needs to be doubled. There's none on Route 1. We're gonna put all those sidewalks on Route 1 without any crosswalks.
We, we are gonna add crosswalks where we're allowed to. So that is part of the side of.
I hope they make them safe and.
We've had issues with Main Street with the state road. So Main.
Dynasty. And I, so one comment in here for goals and hopes are somewhere about reducing Route 1 to two lanes as opposed to four. And I would say the same for Main Street. That would give us enough width to add. A bike lanes. Similar to what Madison has for Route 1.
Yeah.
Their downtown area.
Right, but I ride a lot like this guy does. And I'm not going down a bike lane on behind those cars.
Well, see.
I'll go to the left.
Sidewalk, bike lane, car, parked cars, then driving car. I would put the bike lanes up closer to the center median.
Fair enough.
Then the. Sidewalk, sidewalk, bike lane, parked cars, then moving cars. Or that. Either way. Parked cars protect the bike lanes.
I think the two lanes function extremely well right now because it allows a person making a turn into a parking spot. You know, the first lane, you can go around them. And meanwhile, you have the second lane to make a left-hand turn, which or, you know, they're a very busy turn, but anyway.
I hear what you're saying, but I also think that causes problems with crosswalk. You know? Because the car that stopped is blocking the view for the person who's in the out of the left lane from seeing it. And I see too many times where I've been almost hit, so.
Yes, I, I totally agree. And I think we should encourage people to look before they walk.
But.
I think we should encourage people to pay attention to the law.
Well, you know.
Like, I understand what you're saying.
I hope to that you can see whenever you see someone stopping, you don't know if they're stopping because someone stepped out. Or, or anyway.
Yeah, well, we've taken it all stopping. Let's bring it back.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm actually lean on Megan again on this one. Uh, the, the regional bike ped plan. Um, which I assume was a river cog plan.
Correct.
Um, did that include any sort of granular detail relative to specific roads in specific towns? Like would, would, would Route 1 or Main Street have been covered relative to bike ped improvements?
It did have a few specific recommendations. I can't recall them off the top of my head. I know I incorporated some into my comments on this.
Okay, and then there was also, um, a, a study, Route 1, um.
Corridor.
Corridor study, Old Saver, uh, Westbrook, Clinton, that I know your previous planning director was not fond of. Um, and I think, but it heads a little bit with, with the, the River Cog consultants at the time. Um, but we can, we can maybe pull that out and see if there are any specific recommendations there.
I think one suggestion is that our sidewalk plan, we did a lot of work on it and it's talking about completing the sidewalk plan. Um, which that started in 2006. There's a lot of interest in like ped lanes in maybe rather than revisit the sidewalk plan or complete the sidewalk plan. We should suggest creating a new plan.
That was all six, you said?
Oh, six, yes.
Yeah.
For recent.
So I actually have, um.
It's still pretty good.
I actually have the sidewalk plan marked up and I'm hoping to get actually an accurate map so that we can show what we've done since 2006. Um, but, but I think this may be an opportunity once we get that updated to at some point visit or think about having a plan for Old Saver. I know Route 1 is always the kind of the focus, but we have nice scenic roads that um, people like to walk and ride bikes that are town roads and um, there's a lot of areas where you kind of get stuck.
Right.
So it may be something to suggest in the future plan. So it may be something to suggest in the future plan.
I mean, Great Hammock is, and I know that's a state road, but that's tough for walking or biking.
Sure is, but I'm thinking about from downtown all the way out to the point.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have one, is there a sidewalk there? Partially.
All the way to the point.
No, definitely not.
Absolutely, North Cove. It switches sides. You're right, it does keep going weird. It switches side.
I mean, Plum Bank Road, I mean, there's a number of areas where. You know, we should probably go through and and investigate it as a as a different.
And that's another key area where we should be putting crosswalks and I don't know if that's allowed, but when we switch sides for sidewalk. There should be a crosswalk there. Preferably be with the yellow signs with the lights.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that a specific, are we talking about a specific location where we need some?
Uh, what is it?
Well, I I do, I'm just saying anywhere where we switch sides for sidewalk, there should be a crosswalk when we switch sides. If you were like on College Street or. I'm on College, I've read it.
But there's a number of locations where sidewalks stop or end.
Route One.
And continue on this side of the street, but there's no way to get across.
Lynn Street has a crosswalk which is.
They have a crosswalk.
Which can be really scary when you're walking with a stroller, I will say.
And I wasn't walking with a stroller, but I was scared, right?
Or running with your pons in.
Yeah.
I think it was raised across the block.
Perfect.
So I mean, I think. So I think the towns made a lot of progress in kind of the priority sidewalk area, the Route One and so forth. Um, and we have several grants, we're just waiting for those to um move along, but pretty much we we just got a steep grant from the Westbrook line. To Big Y, um, there's a few gaps, so for example. On Route One, when you are by Penny Penny to um Duncan Dome because of the bridge.
Right.
So I think we need to tackle some of those more difficult projects.
Yeah.
Um, but for the most part, the Route One area really. Is going to be completed, we received another grant that's going to patch. Kind of the spaces um where Job Lot. And then there's going to be a connection through Lynn Street, we'll have sidewalks on both sides.
Okay.
It'll connect through, so we we do have a lot of. We made a lot of progress or we have the funding, we just need to get shovels in the ground on the sidewalk, but. I think we need to rethink a little bit. About some of the other areas in town and then we just mentioned a bunch of them, you know, Plum Bank, Great Hammock.
Yeah.
And maybe it's not just a sidewalk plan, maybe it's uh like.
It's sidewalk and bike, especially like the pause when Plum Bank and Great Hammock, I agree. I think we need to, it's great that we have the plan for the sidewalks, but now we need to augment it with.
I think we made a lot of progress and it's so dated now that we we need to go.
Would would it be appropriate for the the an update to the sidewalk plan and 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 Chris and I had a little bit of conversation about this that? I think, you know, we we aren't going to update the sidewalk plan. As part of this chapter, but I think major like a major recommendation that's in this chapter and probably. Like the first implementation item to come out of this chapter of the plan would be to do that update. Um, and would it be appropriate to basically scope it as a sidewalk and bike lane? Or a sidewalk and bike network plan combined, basically a non vehicular, non motorized.
Yeah.
Work plan essentially?
Absolutely.
To sort of re to sort of re-scope it, so it's like from the get go, we're not just talking sidewalk, we're talking sidewalk bike, et cetera.
Does that include electric bikes? Anyways. But I mean, we should be considered like, but some of those are almost motorcycle, they go about the fast.
Yeah.
I think my my only other concern, I think I think it's here, is the fact that we really don't have good. Public transportation out of Old Saver. Or into Old Saver.
Tell me, tell me what you mean by public transportation.
Buses, trains. I mean, we do have going. East and west or north and south, however you want to look at it, on Amtrak in Shoreline East, but you don't go north. No, yeah, Hartford, Middletown, Hartford, Middletown.
And maybe we should reach out to Joe Comfort who. And it's the nine town transit, I mean, that that's really, I mean.
True.
He he's. Which. I was just gonna say, which is now merged with the Middletown area transit, so they are now.
It did.
Supposed to be more cohesive, they're working on that.
Last regional client, they did a presentation and some of those mergings and the plans there, so. When is that supposed to be effective and do they have any? Cause I've, I mean, I think the nine town transit is great, but I've heard stories where it's not always reliable.
Yeah, um. The merger is complete, they're working on the rebranding and they're working on some specialty rates. Right now, they're doing public engagement on rates for say students or for lower income. Um, as far as routes, I know they were doing public engagement um. A few months ago on new routes, I'm not sure exactly when that would be effective, that would be a Rob or Brendan question. Um. But I could find out.
I think the concern. That we've heard from different applicants is getting people who don't have cars to and from work, even if. They live in town nearby and it's not reliable for them.
Right.
To to rely on nine town transit or an Uber or I mean a a cab if you can. Find one.
Or it takes like two hours.
Right.
And people getting stuck at work if they get there or not being able to get there, so that may be something we wanna focus on is.
The reliability factor.
Did have the one more question about the um sea level rise and the. The raised houses, we were starting to see a number of them in that Plum Bank area. And I'm just really unclear as to how does that impact infrastructure, the road, I mean. And as I was asking earlier, if the if the road is not accessible, what do we do with all these houses that are sixteen feet tall? Um, I'm confused.
I mean, it's a difficult. Situation, we're gonna get into that when we get into hazard mitigation plan next, but. I mean, the one thing that we're finding is the flood regulations, you're not supposed to add fill, you're supposed to keep your existing grade. But now our roads are getting elevated, so if you have an existing house. And you're not an elevated house, your road is higher, so that water is pitching in to the house and we've had. A number of areas in the beach communities and in one in particular that came up recently, there's discussion that people were complaining that the road was too low. And they didn't like the pounding in the road, but if they elevated the road, one particular house. Would have a three foot elevation change, and this is a tiny lot. To their house, so they would potentially, what what do you do, do you pump water out of? That yard so that they don't flood as a result of the road, I mean, it it gets very, very complicated and unfortunately some of the codes. You know, don't mix, but I mean, I think that's.
It was just unclear at this point how it all fits together.
Well, true, I mean, there there's that one bad word called retreat that makes things easier, um, but it's. Not a friendly or or like word, but at some point, and I know Doug and I spent a lot of time when he was in the, we were on the sea level rise. He was on the sea level rise committee and then we talked about all different areas of town, areas where. You know, for example, in flooding, you know, heavier flooding. Where places are islands like Saber Point because you can't get down College Street, so how do you? Handle elevating those roads so significantly? I mean, do you have the road elevated and have bridges to get to the the people to their homes, do they? Do you park on the side of the elevated road, I I mean, we could spend.
Or do you have a bunch of culverts and mini bridges, basically on.
And that's pretty much bridge with your cars, you park along the side, I mean, we we discussed.
We talked about all of those options, but like for now, if there's like another sandy where the. Point one is basically isolated, you you just, you either evacuate, you know, like they told everybody to. You just stay put until the tide retreats.
Right.
And I guess, I'm wondering from a town perspective, if we're. Um, approving, you know, thirty year mortgages. Without a plan. Or has how that homeowner is going to access, how the infrastructure and the town um services are going to access that home. You know, if there's a dramatic change over that that window. Um, kind of who, you know, if a house gets rebuilt and then is no longer accessible because of. The storm to arise, then what what do you do with that?
Yeah, it's very easy to get overwhelmed.
Right.
It's it's like such a big problem, it's it's huge, so there is no one solution, it's.
Well, I guess my my, I I agree, yeah, there's not, not that there's a solution, I guess what I want to put on the table is that. If we continue to allow raised houses, then the pressure to build infrastructure to match the raised houses. Will only grow. Right, so so it's being decided that that's the direction by allowing the homes.
Well, I think we don't have a solution for the road. And you can't stop someone from improving their home if they want to.
So it's a very difficult.
Yeah.
And lengthy conversation because there there's always the whole discussion of retreat. So if you say, okay, we're just not gonna let anybody on the waterfront fix their houses up and rebuild. There's the other implication that those are tax implications, so if that's another. You know, so you have your multi million dollar house that you no longer can repair or fix and you have to retreat. So I I mean, we could discuss it for days, but I mean, I definitely think we all acknowledge there's.
Right.
An issue with, we're elevating the homes so that they're FEMA compliant.
Right.
Um, the roads and the infrastructure, whether it's sewer or or utilities. All need to be updated, it's just trying to investigate plan and and find that balance and and that cut up.
Right, and then if the state or the town goes in and elevates a road. Who's responsible for elevating the homeowner's property?
So there's a few roads that have been elevated.
Yeah.
And it it's people get, some people are very happy and other people are upset because now. Their driveway is lowered, they have to replace their driveway apron and change, you know, the greatening, it it can be. It's almost like a a street by street. Problem, I mean, this street could be an easy fix, you put a few inches, but there are streets that you may on one portion of the street had a foot. Raise the road three foot.
Right.
And the other side of the same street is only a few inches and when you have the newer. Homes that are built for water to go underneath, the higher road really doesn't matter as much. It's the existing homes that are more modest, that are. Lower are the ones that are getting impacted because now you have a higher road. The houses, in 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 some cases, the roads proposed to be elevated higher than the the first floor slab. So where does the water go, I mean, do you do you put a pump in someone's? Yard and figure out a way how to get the water, i- it's complicated.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
And Chris, is it in the sea level rise report, um. Was there an inventory done of of these? Roads that that would need some addressing?
We and we did more of that, I think, in the hazard mitigation.
A natural hazards mitigation plan?
Which we're gonna revisit, I mean, we did talk about, I mean, we were really looking in the sea level rise plan.
Right.
At more, you know, what's gonna happen in twenty fifty, what's gonna happen, and and we did talk about and identify it is, but I think. The hazard mitigation plan really has more of that list, which we're due to revisit this year.
Was that right? Okay.
So another concern I'll I'll just throw out there is um sewage or septic, so the town has avoided that. Um, you know, we've got the high density areas and everybody's got their own septic system, sea level rise. Like this house we just approved. You know, all these houses that are being lifted, they have leach fields right there and they flood over, so I don't know how they're. Acceptable, um, you know, that's been talked about on the committee, but it's just gonna get worse, so. It just seems like it needs to be. Part of the plan to just start looking at, I I put it here like hybrid solutions, so it's not. You know, one sewage treatment plant for the whole town and everybody's gonna pump over there, but you can have a neighborhood leach field. Even though there's no property available, but you could have like a neighborhood leach field, you could have, uh, you know, goes to a pumping station.
I know they they have that in Provincetown where they have a centralized. Septic.
Yeah.
Of course, during the height of the season this year, it failed. And they literally shut it down for almost a week.
Look at the cost they're at.
Aren't they working on this, um, with a lot of, aren't a lot of engineers working on this problem with the? Water?
I mean, we're still working on it, I think maybe we're getting closer to, we've been working on it since the seventies for sewer avoidance. So I I think we're we're making strides towards it, there've been a number of neighborhoods that. Through the W P C A, they made a lot of progress in updating onsite systems, but there are certain areas where. They're not going to be able to come up with an onsite solution because the depth of groundwater. You know, it is too high, the lots are too small, the houses, you. You have a three thousand square foot house, like the house we just looked at, their septic is on an easement on the adjacent property. There's just. They're looking at it more on a property by property basis, but there is a lot of. Town effort and time into it, it's just not an easy fix, just like, how do we make the road and the elevated house work, but um.
Yeah, it's more a case by case as opposed to like an integrated townwide plan, right? I mean, you might say, right, this neighborhood is gonna be a case by case, but.
Whether whether it's sewer, road, any utility, I I mean, it's.
Have we reached any point where D E P is mandating we do something?
So.
Cause they are in Old Line, correct? In some of the neighborhoods, beach neighborhoods?
Very long, long story, sure.
Sorry, I don't, yeah, I, cause I.
So pretty much the the town ended up, there was the mandate and we're sued by the D E P and I'm making this very basic.
And that's when they did all the replacements in the septic.
So then in, I think it was two thousand, the town entered into an agreement. The town fulfilled its agreement as much as it could, but there are certain onsite solutions that will not work, so. W P C A and the town are going back and forth with how to deal. With those remaining homes where they can't put onsite septic or there's other hurdles.
Cause I don't, uh, I guess it's fortunate. Old Line is fortunate that East Line has sewer, which is tapped into Waterford and goes into London. And they're forcing a number of those neighborhoods to hook up to.
Old Saver was probably the first to get forced out of Clinton, Westbrook, Old Line, Old City, we're all.
Let's see, we don't have any nearby sewer that we.
No, but I think that the some of the other towns are watching to see what's gonna happen with us to see what their next steps are.
You could, uh, it's it's currently the closest sewer I think is probably. Um, at right at the Deep River Essex line, the the Essex Essex dump. That's on uh Route one fifty four, that's probably the closest extent. Right now.
Okay. It's closer than I thought.
Not close enough.
Exactly. Out on my street.
And and actually very close, very close to the um this the steam train lines or, you know, if you're gonna use right of way, but.
Okay. Okay, cool.
The other thing too is what about natural gas and their utilities?
See, I haven't seen natural gas in here.
Right.
And I'd love to see expansion to that.
Okay, that's what's the, what's the status of that?
Pretty much, we even the name of. Natural gas and runs along Route One and the more densely populated commercial areas.
Hmm.
Um, there were some. Neighborhoods that approached the gas company to connect, I just don't think there's enough residents. In these areas to generate what they need for this type of a project, so that's another thing.
Right.
Is there any thought of? Um, even getting, I mean, natural gas obviously is is cheaper, cleaner than. You know, home heating oil, but it's still a fossil fuel. Um, is there discussion about, you know, solar, then you know, battery, micro grids, things like that?
I mean, it's another option, I mean, I think they're all options, but I think some of our neighborhoods. I mean, it's another option, I mean, I think they're all options, but I think some of our neighborhoods have. Really outdated utility poles.
Yeah.
They have outdated, sorry. There there, I mean, there's neighborhoods where the the internet service is poor, you don't have natural gas.
Like it's the natural gas comes down Maple Avenue to almost George. And I'm on Forest Glen and I can't get it because I would have to pay for them to place it from Maple Avenue to my house. And as people in front of me sign on, it reduces what I pay.
I can afford that, come on.
And uh every source likes to wait until their poles fall down or you want a replacement.
Wow.
That's another great infrastructure.
Maybe it was an S N E T pole that's talking about it, but they're not.
Fifteen year plans, that's putting on the authority on your ground instead of poles.
There's engineering issues with putting utilities underground now. That's a big problem.
Times what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna talk about rate cases and utilities now we pay for things, but it's it's not that easy, unfortunately.
Do a new road, they should put a pipe for utilities, but I mean.
I mean, maybe the suggestion is improve ways for alternative energy.
Yeah. But it's more reliable. Red utility is probably like whether it's gas or electric or broadband or. Micro grids are a great way to go, yeah. But especially, yeah, let me go to the town here.
Right, and when you talk about a micro grid, like and and I think it's in the sea level rise report or somewhere, but it. It's talk about, you could have one here, a fire station, a town hall, the po- or the police station, you know, this. Downtown network, but out in the neighborhoods, it's just not working.
It's not worth it, it's not worth the expense, I agree with that.
So be like for critical infrastructure.
But if you could, you could get the middle school and you could probably even get a good win in the library and now you have shelter.
Right, yes, yes.
Because you give more houses putting solar and you have batteries in their homes, that you're almost like a micro grid emergent, the rest of the grid is dying to handle that. You're thinking ten, twenty years down the road here.
Well, it's it it, no, they really, it's a good individual solution, but to do like an integrated solution, that's.
Windmills.
I'd love to put a windmill up in my yard, but I don't think the neighbors would like it and you'll never approve it, cause it's gotta be like a hundred and twenty. I don't.
Yeah, just an observation on the gas that went down Maple, I know, like I latched on to it in my heartbeat.
I, yeah.
You know, this is great, but most of the neighbors were like, whoa, you know, they didn't wanna upgrade their appliances and. It's it's a, it's an investment uh decision.
In the way the gas company handles it, because they're an unregulated utility and they're competitive. They're not gonna just put it in like electric line.
Right.
Because electric lines, they have to put in. They gotta make money on that investment, so they're not gonna run it by.
Correct. Yeah, maybe I was on the right location, but they did run it to our house tomorrow.
Well, because of where you are.
Yeah.
I'm.
You didn't, you must not have had enough people interested on your road.
They never can, that's the problem.
That's unfortunate.
Right.
They did can, but so us.
And I know at least three people that replaced their furnace since I moved in, including me, so.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Okay, anyway.
So maybe it's partnering with the.
It's, yeah.
The gas company.
It's getting the education out there that this is what you need. And I think they can offer programs where you get. High efficiency gas equipment at reasonable rates.
I like that, be more assertive, John.
Uh, yeah, I I.
I do.
A little a little less aggressive than aggressive.
You know, when we talk about growing the E V, electric vehicle infrastructure. While it's great that they put the charger across and next to the pickleball court. They really need to be putting in high speed chargers, which whoever's charging will pay for, they pay for the electricity. So.
Well, I think there's a strategy too with the slower charging, that if they're in a shopping center. You may tend to go buy more things or stay somewhere longer, play your pickleball.
Today, today was a perfect example, I had to go to Waterford, I parked near Best Buy where they have a charging station. Spent an hour, I spent fifty dollars at the bookstore and got free charge. High speed.
There you go, so encourage your encourage your merchants to put those right in front of their uh.
Especially like Sabre Shopping Center.
Right.
You should have one in the front, one near Walmart, one near Stop and Shop. At least one, at least one, yeah.
Okay, so I've been, as as you've been talking about, I like, we've been blending concerns with goals and hopes, it's it's all sort of part of the same thing. Um, but what we, are there other goals and hopes, why don't we talk a little bit more more optimistic? Are the things that that was sort of left out of this? Also, whoever provided it, good use of the word shareo, nicely done.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go look that one up. Those pictures of the bike with Arizona. Thank you.
Yeah, I also like.
Exactly, yeah. I might, yeah. S L R or S R L. S L E and all of those.
You're gonna have so many acronyms to learn with natural hazard mitigation.
We don't really talk about. Uh, improving the electricity delivery in in the town. Or phone or phone and cable. We really only have the one internet provider, right? We don't have fiber in town. Are they do they have fiber?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I I switched to Comcast and then they upgraded, they're like, here we have them.
And um where we, where new infrastructure is needed, are there other? Other obvious gaps, and again, we're we're, we'll take a look, I think, maybe next time at the progress of the of the um. Two thousand six pedestrian plan or sidewalk plan. Um, there are some people had mentioned, you know, connect different subdivisions, I I think that was probably non 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 vehicular. Um, are there any, are there any, just thinking about roads, are there any hugely problematic areas, aside from? The what we've heard about traffic safety, pedestrian safety on Route one and on Main Street, are there any, you know, really problematic? Current roadways? For for cars?
One of the things I see in, we've been here, I think, six years now, there are more golf carts than now than when I arrived. And the the apparent rules around golf carts are are. Not always being followed, there there's golf carts everywhere, um, the state road and and all this kind of stuff, and so. You know, I look at it and say, I I think it's a good idea to have that, I think you you call it kind of e-mobility, micro mobility. I really like that and would like to encourage it, but I think it, the way it's implemented today particularly. Down uh Maple towards that Cornfield Point area is very dangerous, you know, a car golf cart.
Yeah.
Collision is gonna be a disaster. With the car, right?
With the car?
Yeah.
You've seen some of the golf carts, yes.
You know what, to your point, like, we're down in Indian Town and. Sabre requires plates.
Yeah, you know.
And in my mind, if there's a license plate on a vehicle, it's a vehicle and it, and you should be a licensed driver.
You're supposed to be.
When I see a ten, eleven, twelve year old driving a golf cart. I have a problem with that.
I think the town radio, you have to be sixteen.
I'm sixteen with license. Oh, if you're sixteen.
Everyone sees.
Yeah, oh, I think in our area, it's worse only because. I've been known to do it to cross Maple Avenue to get down to Fenway.
Right.
Or that.
Right.
I gotta cross a state road to get into.
Right.
Or or an all or Fenway, or Fenway. And there's a lot of them, and there's a lot of them that have underage drivers.
Oh, yeah, and they're 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 flying around, you know, some of these golf carts and. I mean, in Indian Town, our our speed limit is twenty or twenty five miles an hour. And they're well capable of going past them.
And they shouldn't, and they shouldn't be.
More of an enforcement issue than.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Well, if we want to encourage, cause I I think it's a great thing that we want to encourage, but. But we need this whole huge infrastructure to make it safe. I don't think we do.
I don't think you want them going down Main Street.
No, no.
Or trying to cross the pause way or down to Sabre Point.
No, it's it's.
Not the way it exists today.
Loud on state roads.
They're not supposed to.
Right, right, no, not not the way things exist today.
I don't think the state wants golf carts in the world, so it's that's kind of a moot point because.
I mean, we're so governed by state roads, right? Main Street, it's like Main Street.
Right.
You know, Palm Bank, Green Hammond, that whole loop, that's all state road.
So the one thing that we've always had an issue with.
Write a letter with the state about how to manage and use those.
No, I think it's it's a local issue, you know, cause P D is gonna do what they do.
The important thing in terms of like design and how we want these roads to be used, let's work with the state better.
Great.
We're just trying to say what the state really can do anything about.
It's another one of the dated issues. Right.
Well, the other thing that we repeated and said over the years is we really don't have. East west connector roads, so if Route one or ninety five is shut down. There are certain areas of town, you're really going nowhere, so um we we try to encourage it with subdivisions, we try to encourage it wherever. Possible, but I think it's still an issue.
Especially north of ninety five.
Exactly.
So I'm sorry, so Chris, you're saying an an east west connector north of ninety five is is a.
I I think all over town, I mean, we really, all our roads really run north and south, and we've got ninety five and. Route one that are running east and west, but when Route one is shut down and ninety five is shut down. The traffic goes to those other parts and we don't have a lot of ways to to kind of connect through.
Yes, let me have that bridge at McDonald's. Yeah.
Yeah.
So something like diversifying routes for east west connection or something like that?
Well, some of these neighborhoods, especially north of ninety five, need to be more connected so that you can get around things.
Yeah, the problem though is it's wetlands and ledge and all those fun environmental things that we're protecting. But I mean, there there are certain areas that I, I mean, I think there are opportunities to do it, we encouraged it. Through our plans, through our subdivision, not that we've seen a subdivision in a long time, we'll really have to dust off the book for. For a subdivision, but um it's something that's that's still an issue, it's trying to to get people around. When those main roads are shut. I mean, another good point um with the northern part of town is trying to find alternatives when you have trees down.
Right.
Um, you know, kind of storm emergency routes.
All of them get shut down?
Often.
Yes, you. I know, I think uphill, they get in trouble too, like one tree, all power all the way up.
More underground utilities, that's always a.
Well, I thought the chairman shut that shut that discussion right down.
Doug was pushing for it.
Just wanted to know how it's gonna be paid for, they can keep the pole on my yard as long as my rates stays.
They've got nothing, I mean. I looked down the street, Brandy Falls, you know, every everyone came around and put their little thing on it and took the C L P thing right off.
Yeah, if you notice the new poles going up are pretty hefty.
Yeah.
I think they crossed two poles.
Whole trees that have, you know.
Plus the uh crosshairs are uh positive.
You still using arsenic?
No, they said.
Insect proof pole?
No, 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 Nick, they send uh osmos, I believe, around drill holes down to the poles.
Yeah, last summer.
Yeah, that was.
So they went through, they dug around the tree, uh, the poles. And then, yeah, for termites or whatever they were doing, they.
Do we want to insert somewhere in here that uh, you know, in. Whatever transportation improvements or roads that we wanna pay attention to the aesthetics, um. The scenic roads idea to make it charming and.
True.
If we wanna preserve the scenic cars, we definitely wanna preserve the scenic roads and like.
Yeah. And also we have the improvements going forward to.
Do we have a scenic roads plan?
Yes, we do.
So that suffer from this?
Yes. But it's only certain roads in town.
Right. So we're gonna revise that plan?
Exactly, a scenic roads plan, a scenic roads ordinance, and that's kind of what I was thinking, you know, we've got. A sidewalk plan, we're talking about bikeways, we have a scenic roads plan, maybe we had to need to think about all these plans and merge. You know, in into consolidated. Um, another thought is we're talking about utility poles and and things that may get outdated. Um, just like we have, we used to have rules for cell towers and things like that, is to have plans to. Eliminate the infrastructure when it, once it's outdated. Meaning, so say cellphone towers are no longer needed. So then you have this big cellphone tower or.
Like people do with their satellite dishes.
Right.
To take, you know, have. Encourage removal of outmoded.
So it's cable, you know, you see some houses, they have like ten cables just hanging there, cause it's not worth it.
We may not need cable lines anymore, so all of a sudden, you know, do we need the cable pole, I obviously there's multiple utilities on a pole, but it's just something to.
Now, is there any ordinance around satellite dishes?
About like the small one or or large?
Yeah, the small ones that people put on their house when they go to DirecTV and then they cancel DirecTV and then they go to Comcast, but never remove the dish.
I don't know, Chris, that's probably just a zoning thing, right?
We don't, we don't regularly move, so if you have your. Five dishes on your roof, that's your home is regulated by, right?
I think something Chris could do, drive around town, look at abandoned.
Thirty five foot high house, can you put the dish on top of the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're exempt, I'm certain. I mean, you would hope that the utility companies and the homeowners would wanna remove them.
Dude, their TV doesn't care, it's not worth it.
Well, I don't think they're doing that long.
They're not.
Yeah, so. I'd say like major utility is like.
Right.
A hundred and twenty foot cellphone tower, you know, those are the things I'm not. There's somebody with three extra cable wires hanging off the side of their house, that's. That's where I'm going, I'm thinking big picture. I think it's get ripped down by the cars, it's, you know, they hold away.
Right, one more note.
Remove the phone line from my house, the outside. Rolled it up and put it over on the other side of the street from the pole it came from. Rolled it up and put it over on the other side of the street from the pole it came from.
All right, what else do we have?
What I would propose perhaps by way of trying to get us back on track is is uh perhaps for next time. And I mean, I can circulate this again, uh and if anyone has other things to to add, we can do so. What I propose is two things, um I think probably one for Chris and one for me. Um, that we can work with Chris to sort of, we can take a look at the sidewalk plan. And kind of get a sense of where it is. And maybe we could also get um copies of the scenic road plan, just to kind of see where that's at. Um, and then I would propose probably for next time, I can give you my first draft at the um. Those five thematic. Uh. Points that, you know, connected and vibrant and resilient. Um, as it relates to transportation infrastructure and try to pull some of these. These themes and and issues that we've been discussing um together into into some relatively concise statements and we can kind of talk about that. So that will be that will be next time.
So if what I'm hearing. You're gonna sort of. Connect these. Because right now is, to me, it's a little all over the place.
It is all over the place, yeah. And I mean, and and a lot of.
It's a big topic.
A lot of these things, the the laundry list um will be revisited. Um, and you know. Sorted and revisited when we do our our specific action items or our sort of broad policy statements. Um, but I I wanted to kind of get a sense of. How you and 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 this input is sort of thinking about. The important uh elements of of transportation and infrastructure in town. And and I'll try to, you know, kind of. Come up with those thematic narratives. Um. To see if we have sort of captured that that thought. And then we'll go from there.
Correct.
And I think it may be good to commission to just to revisit. The existing transportation scenic roads sidewalk. I mean, some of these things have been. Shelled for a while. And we use that, I mean sidewalks are moving along. I don't. Remember the last time we sat down and said, let's just read the sidewalk plan and discuss. So it's. It it may be worthwhile. And and scenic roads is very limited.
Always Christmas Eve for me.
Right after twas the night, right?
Right, yeah.
The scenic roads and the sidewalk plan, can you distribute that?
It's all on our website. All the plan. We have scenic roads upstairs. I can go.
Actually, I do want to get.
Yeah, I can go and grab. Uh, copies for everything.
But the sidewalk plan is on. Website, yeah.
And the sidewalk map, the sidewalk map, I have everything marked up to get it updated. It's just. In updating mode, but I can. Fill you in. I just don't have it in.
How much of that has been realized?
Right.
And if you look online at the sidewalk plan, I mean, the priority one areas are pretty mature. All that.
That's good.
Or slated to be done.
Yeah, good work.
Sound or zoning or is it under planning?
It's under the planning commission, the sidewalk plan and sidewalk map and. If you go actually on our website now, we have a link, it's right on the homepage, it's two plans, so. So you can go through it's like plans and regulations. We're switching it around a little bit so you can just kind of click on there and go, oh, I want to learn about. Scenic roads or hazard mitigation. So we've kind of been. Regional transportation, we've been dumping them all into one spot and kind of giving credit to the author versus. Having people click around looking for a subject.
Very good. Anybody have any other comments they want to give to John before we? Release him to the wolves?
More more coyotes.
Oh, coyotes, okay.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yeah, have a very good Thanksgiving. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So any committee that represented the statement or staff report?
Sure, um. Just so that you're aware, we are getting busy with. Applications. I expected this last spring. I expected it in the fall, but it's here, so. Um. Typically, our first meeting in the month is referrals. Uh, and the second meeting, we've been trying to focus on workshops. Um, I think you can get through these three or continue them, but for your meeting on December seventh. You have Max's Place, which is. Um, the the Big Y Shopping Center with a proposed.
Yes.
Convenience store and a drive through um. Beverage establishment of some sort. I'm assuming it's coffee or we don't, they're not disclosing. The gas petition. Was denied by the zoning commission and we're being appealed in Superior Court, so you will not see that. Um, the Saber Oasis. Which is on Spencer Plains Road. They're coming in to propose a supermarket and two drive-throughs. And then. The um, the third item that I have on your agenda. Is where the Chesley Sleep Center used to be and Boston Post Road. It's an antiques. Center right now, white building.
Near Johnny ass.
Across from Johnny. So that um is proposed as an affordable housing application. So. I mean, your purviews, don't get it for the big picture. Item sidewalks, consistency with plan, traffic and so forth. Um. So I I think maybe to continue, but we might as well just start. Thinking it.
Isn't there a moratorium for the drive-throughs?
So the zoning commission um did put the drive-through moratorium into effect. So these two applications, and yes, I did get legal advice and. Analyze the statutes very thoroughly. These are two live valid applications. So what happens is the.
Listen to them as a moratorium.
So what happens is when you go into a moratorium, you have to have an effective date. And it has to be advertised. And they submitted their applications before those dates.
And the gas station you're talking about is the Big Y Gas Station?
Yeah.
It was a proposed text amendment that was denied.
Um, we talked about that at, right?
Right, yeah.
And so the application doesn't have a gas station yet.
It has a landscaped area. It looks like a gas.
Just reading her gas.
There's an area that.
Yeah, evergreen, like gas. Um, and the Oasis does not have any gas stations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two fast food restaurants and a supermarket.
But in the current. Drive through regulations not allowed. There's a bad address or that's some of the debate about. Why the moratorium lines are we gonna say it when?
In the last meeting and it's not geared toward any specific, there's just. There's the zoning commission opened up the drive-through regulations. And the B four just with Bennys. Um, at that point, I kind of said, well, we're opening them up from.
There was something about like only on Route one.
Well, they were from Route one, but you have the other zoning districts and that pretty much went to the Essex line. And then they cut out the B three at one point. And there's a lot of demand. And I mean, there's areas kind of in the auto model area that can be drive-throughs. Mariners Way, so. I think as they've kind of. Seen the demand and thought about it a little bit, you know, we're not against it, let's just put the brakes. And rethink it because you could have eight drive-through restaurants on a lot and i- is that what you want? Um. Or and I'm not just drive-throughs, this is the, it could be a drive-through restaurant, a drive-through bank. It could be a drive-through.
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy. And then the other thing is that. The drive-through of the of the past. Is not what's in the future. So if you look at other towns. Um, like in Bristol, there's a Dunkin Donuts. That they don't allow anybody in. There's just, the people inside make coffee, you drive around.
Yeah, it turns in the same way.
There are certain, um, so they're not related to an indoor restaurant anymore. I mean. Covid kind of taught us something. I mean, there could be the day of your. Um, drive-through. Pharmacy, but there is no pharmacy because it's your drive-through testing center. Where you go up to a kiosk and someone swaps you and you go on your way. Um, a lot of things now are mobile apps. There's drive-through. Restaurants um that either people go in and said that you can't go into the drive-through lane, there's no menu. You have to preorder. So so i- it's kind of thinking about that, thinking about, and I think that's. Uh, as more people are using drive-throughs, do we have, you know, and if it's true, people are saying, well, because of Covid, people are relying on drive-throughs more than they were before. You know, do we have enough stacking space for cars? If people are not going to go inside anymore.
Right.
And so and and they're not going to park.
Because you look at the Dunkin Donuts near Smithland.
Yeah.
And during Covid, it was out onto Route one.
And I put a whole bunch of questions for the commission, just and I just said, just think about it. When you go to another town, I mean, do you? Like having drive-through lanes right up against the sidewalk? Do you um like having, you know, even in town here, I mean, if you look at the shopping center. At the end of it, you've got the drive-through Wells Fargo. I mean, you could have it tacked on at the end of a shopping center. You could have multiple independent.
Well, he's got enough space to put pad sites.
Well, I mean, I'm not even getting, I'm just kind of talking in general, you know, do. You know, what are the likes and dislikes? Do you do you want them attached to shopping centers? Do you want them as multiple little buildings? Do you want ten of them on a lot? Do you want them all up and down middle sexturn pipe or Route one or Mariners Way or it's drive-through, 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 drive-through? You know, do you do you want separate entries? Do you know, I mean, you just really kind of have to. Think about it. And the drive-through today is not. The drive-through of nineteen seventy, it's quick, quick, quick. You go through, your order's not ready, or you go and you sit in your designated parking space with your number and click your number and somebody runs your food or your. Your clothing or whatever it is to the to the car is.
Or you're cuddling. Hope you do it, Dunkin Donuts. People get mad at you.
Anyway, so you're gonna have a pretty.
Done it. I've gotten you up there.
Yeah.
So you've got a pretty packed agenda for the next meeting, the twenty first. We can continue any of these items. I think it's gonna take John a little time to get some of this together, so. Um, the twenty first, we can continue or.
Twenty first of December?
December. Well, well, that's that's another thing too. So I mean, I think I was gonna talk to John about maybe going to January and we can spend a little more time behind the scenes. Filing it up or getting a little. Tighter for you as far as the text. And then um. Your next meeting after. The twenty first. Is the. Sorry, I'm at that time of the year where. No, I have a. And the other thing, just so that, just so that you're aware, is due to the holidays. January fourth and the twenty first are also the nights of the zoning meetings. Um, the two applications you're gonna see in the next. Um. Meeting are gonna be on those meetings, so I may be kind of. Bouncing back and forth. We'll we'll all be in the same building, um, but. I'll probably be at the zoning.
There's not necessarily.
So you're. You're done here. Well, no, I'm standing eighteen in the first in the second meeting of what? Um, yes. I I think I think I forgot that. I wanted to talk about that. Um. So we'll be busy. Um, just so you know, um, I, we're waiting right now. Um. On December fourteenth, I think I mentioned that talking about sea level rise. Um, Old Saber Westbrook. Fenwick and Clinton applied for this tri-count Long Island Sound Future Fund grant. Um, so we should hopefully get an answer by. December fourteenth as to the status. Um, on that and potentially we're discussing another deep grant. There's a lot of money out there. So we're kind of. Going all over the place. It's just where to go first. Hopefully, well, something will come out of that. I don't know if you have any questions for me? I think that's it for my staff report.
Thank you. Like she said, next meeting could be lengthy, so. We'll try to keep it contained. Try to keep us more on agenda than I did tonight. Um. And uh, if you want to call it, that's the option. The chairman's proud. And with that. Uh, I ask for a motion to adjourn. So who's? Can I get a second?
Second.
Thomas and Peggy. Any opposed? Any abstains? I think Megan opposed, so Megan has. Wish you all a happy and a safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.